Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Ostry Bailey is absent excused and Ben Wolkowitz is connected via conference call. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, in the God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion on the executive minutes of July 28, 2014.
I'll move them.
Second. Well, we already discussed these as an executive. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, a motion for the regular minutes of July 28, 2014. I'll move them.
I'll move them.
Second. Counsel discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome everyone, for a beautiful August evening. Just a reminder that this is our only meeting for this month, that our next regular meeting will be on September 8th. I have a few things to share and a few other announcements, then we're going to do a resolution One of the many things that's happening related to our 125th anniversary is a proclamation we received from James Madison Montpelier, the Federation there. Whereas on August 16, 2014, we will celebrate the 125th anniversary of the borough of Madison, New Jersey, named in honor of James Madison Jr., the fourth president of the United States of America. Whereas James Madison, more than any other single individual, successfully engineered the framing and ratifying of the U.S. Constitution, that has endured, ensured freedom and prosperity in this nation, has enjoyed for more than two centuries, thus earning the title "Father of the Constitution." And furthermore, whereas in the first Congress, James Madison served as a chief architect and principal advocate for America's Bill of Rights and ten amendments that guaranteed those liberties retained by people, by the people. And whereas James Madison, as a President Commander in Chief, safeguarded the Constitution by resisting the temptation to extend executive power during the nation's first declared war. And whereas the Montpelier Foundation, with encouragement and support of Orange County, Virginia, the district that launched Mr. Madison's political career, has fulfilled and continues to fulfill its mission to preserve and promote the enduring legacy of President James Madison and his wife, Dolly, the beloved exemplar of what a First Lady should be. And whereas James Madison Montpelier has become the leading hub for decimating, disentimating, dissentinating, in Mr. Madison's own words, he said it better than I did, "The history of the Constitution on which should be staked the happiness of people great even in its infancy and possibly the cause of liberty throughout the world." Now therefore be resolved, we commend the borough of Madison, New Jersey, for its brilliance in recognizing the lasting contribution of James Madison by naming their town for Mr. Madison and continuing to keep the bright memory of its enduring legacy on behalf of all the citizens of the United States of America. So a nice little proclamation recognizing our 125th, what we'll be celebrating between now and the end of the year. And talk about 125th, and one of the great events that will be coming up, we'll probably hear in a report shortly, is our Clambake this Saturday. So tickets are available, I encourage people to be there. And our council will be there serving popcorn. I will not be able to make it myself, but so during the movie, I want to thank the council for taking the lead and making sure people can enjoy a great movie and enjoying the popcorn. A few other things going on this past week. I had the honor yesterday to present a proclamation on behalf of the governing body to Maggie Caparasso for her 95th birthday. She was, actually, her birthday is in September, but they celebrated it yesterday. Eighty-nine of her 95 years were here in Madison, so that's Maggie Caparasso. And many people know Bert and Don Marcy. Bert Marcy has been serving on the Historic Preservation Committee for a good number of years, and Don Marcy used to write for the Independent Press, and they're a longtime Madison resident. They celebrated their 50th anniversary last week. And council members, you see a little gift at your places. A brick, Mark Tudor House at Madison, groundbreaking ceremony, July 16, 2014. These came from Mark Jaeger, and these are part of the original building on the site, the Green Villa that we know that burned down last November. And just a few comments I made at the groundbreaking, that this site is truly how government should and can work, that all too often a disaster such as we saw last November, just barely eight months ago, can lead for years of a vacant property enclosed in construction fence wrapped with bureaucratic red tape. But working with a great developer and working with a council that designated the site for redevelopment and the planning board, also working, we have groundbreaking, it's already happened, as one of the neighbors pointed out, it's a great sign when the porta potties are delivered. So in less than a year and a half after the fire, we will see a new building much like the original building. So this is a little gift, so please take it home with you. And I want to recognize the anniversary of Tom Nutson from the Madison Public Library. He's celebrating his 30th anniversary on August 26th. So if you can extend our congratulations, Nancy. And I want to share another letter, try to read through this quickly, but it also recognizes the effort of many of our residents and the services we hear in Madison. And this is coming after yet another disaster that could have been far worse. It has been six months to the day that our house had a major fire breakout. As you can imagine, the experience is one that takes quite some time to recover. I am happy to report that not only is the project rebuilt and coming along nicely, but our insurance company has been very helpful, thus making the challenge experience a little less so. Looking back, our family was both humbled and overwhelmed by the outpouring from the Madison community during this time in our lives. While I would certainly never wish this experience upon anyone, you can realize how fortunate you are to have a great family and great friends in a time of need. That is why I'm writing this letter, which truth be told, I should have penned a few months ago. I cannot express the gratitude our family feels for quick and effective response of the Madison Fire Department and Madison Police Department displayed on the 9th of January this year. Had it not been for their extraordinary effort, not only to arrive at the scene in timely fashion, but to also ensure that they contained the fire to the third floor of the home, there is little doubt that the entire home could have and would have been in jeopardy without their effort. There is a myriad of reasons why living in a town of Madison is so terrific, fun people, a great downtown scene, good restaurants, outstanding athletic fields, the list could go on for pages. That being said, knowing that you have a high-performing team like the fire and police teams that responded so quickly and saved our home, certainly belonging to top of the list. Again, this is a letter a few months overdue, but I am a firm believer in recognizing great performance. There is no question that Madison Fire and Madison Police exceeded expectations on January 9th. Many thanks to all involved, to a job well done. This was from Jamie Foley. All right, we're going to be passing a resolution, as I mentioned, in a few minutes, but just to talk about why we have this resolution here and why we have a special guest in our midst. Can you imagine a loved one, a good friend or a neighbor that came down with cancer or heart disease, and you just never talked about it, you didn't want to, or you shunned that person because they had the disease? It just wouldn't happen. Yet mental health problems are more common than both cancer and heart disease combined, and yet many feel shunned. If we're going to help those in need, we need to change the way we look at mental health and take on that challenge just as we have with cancer and heart disease. We have a resolution, and I'll read this through, and I'll call up Governor Cody, and I'll ask for a motion and approval. Resolution of the Borough of Madison, promoting public awareness on mental health illness and overcoming the stigma, stereotyping and discrimination by declaring the borough of Madison a stigma-free town. Whereas the Borough Council of the Borough of Madison, the State of New Jersey and the County of Morris, recognizes that one in five Americans have experienced some sort of mental illness, according to Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is SMAHSA. Whereas despite major accomplishments and progress achieved, New Jersey must still overcome the significant challenges before it can reach the goal of making quality mental health care available to all who need it. And whereas mental health problems are more common than cancer and heart disease combined, and more than half of all Iraq and Afghanistan veterans hospitalized in VA hospitals are treated for mental illness according to Veterans Administration, and the stigma associated with mental illness is the biggest roadblock to recovery. Whereas the Cody Fund for Mental Health has initiated a statewide campaign requesting towns throughout New Jersey to designate their municipalities as a stigma-free town. And whereas by declaring Borough of Madison a stigma-free town, the Borough Council supports the elimination of stigma associated with mental health illness and will promote public awareness of mental health issues, work to overcome the stigma, stereotyping, discrimination, and by removing any barriers to recovery. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, that the Borough of Madison is a stigma-free town, and now be further resolved that on major thoroughfares in and out of the Borough of Madison, road signs shall be erected showing the establishment of a stigma-free town. May I have a motion for that resolution, R. 233, 2014?
I'll move it.
Second.
I'll second.
Counsel discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yay.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Governor Cody, please come on.
I have a framed copy of the resolution we just passed. Again, thank you to the council and you mayor. You know, not too long ago, my wife and I decided to create the Cody Fund for Mental Health. As you're probably well aware, my wife is a mental health survivor, but she's also a breast cancer survivor. And she goes and speaks all around the country on this disease, and what she says as part of her speech, she talks about when she had, was diagnosed with breast cancer, and she had a double mastectomy, and before the operation, as they were willing her in, all the doctors and nurses said, "Don't worry about it, you're going to be fine, you can beat this." And when she had shock therapy treatments, nobody said a word to her. And it's because of the stigma that's attached with mental illness, which we all know about. So when we created the fund, I got a call from a woman in Paramus who said, "Oh, Governor, I saw what you're doing, and I just wanted to tell you that in Paramus, we had an ordinance passed when we've created, when we called them in Paramus, they call Paramus a stigma-free zone." I didn't like the word, use of the word "zone" as opposed to "town," I thought it was better. So we decided to start a campaign to go around and put these signs in towns that would allow them. And by doing that, it creates conversation, because people are going to say to you, Mayor, or to the council people, "What is, what are you talking about, stigma-free? Oh, it refers to mental illness." That forces the conversation to be had. And the more you talk about it, and the more people are willing to say, "I need help," we can get mental health hopefully on a parity with cancer, as your resolution talks about, and heart disease, because more people are affected by mental health than both of those diseases. Yet everybody wants to raise money to fight heart disease or cancer, it's politically correct and it's sociable, but if you talk about mental illness, we're going to have a fundraiser, geez, I don't know, you know, I don't know if it'll be associated, or we're going to have a walk, well, no, we'll do it for breast cancer and whatever. And you know, there was a football player in the NFL, and when they did Pink Day, he refused, and he said, "My family suffers from mental illness, and the colors for mental illness are lime and black, and I'm going to wear that color that day, and if you want to find me, go ahead." And they fined him $25,000, and he gave the money to a mental health charity. But it just shows you the stigma that's out there. And to be standing here at this moment, we all just found out of one of America's greatest performers, Robin Williams, who seemingly, from what the police are saying not too many hours ago, committed suicide. So if it can happen in my family, if it can happen to Robin Williams, it can happen in all our families. It knows no barriers, gender, race, wealth, poor, doesn't matter, young or old, it could happen to anyone. So hopefully in our lifetimes, we can see it on a parity. Who knows? But this is a start. So you'll have conversations here in this great town of Madison about the stigma, and hopefully somebody will step forward who may be here to four would not admit that they have mental illness. So to all of you, once again, thank you, and thank you, Mayor. Great to see my cousin back to work, and I guess that's why he got a haircut. But again, thank you very much. Yeah, this is fun. But, and this is for free, Buck. It's the only thing you're going to get from me for free. But it, you know, it's not overbearing, but it sends the message and starts a conversation. Yes, right, in the colors of the mental health crusade. Thanks again.
Thank you again for coming, and thank you for your effort, because we will fight this together. Yes, thank you. Courts from committee, health, Mr. Landrigan?
Okay, just a very brief one. But the Health Department want me to remind everybody that with school just around the corner, I know it's beginning of August, but it's getting near that time of year, they want me to remind parents to make sure that their children's shots were all up to date. How's it, Mayor?
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Catalonello?
Thank you, Mayor. Borough Engineer Vogel will be presenting today, so I will keep my reports very short. The roads, sewers, all the projects are moving along, gangbusters, and you'll get a complete reporting from Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department, as usual, have been very busy. They've installed new poles on Broadway and Central Avenue. They began a pole transfer on Parkside Drive. They're doing new lamppost installation on Shepherd Lane, and they began troubleshooting of the failed underground cables on Nordling. They've also removed all the steel wire reels from the Public Works yard for recycling, and they had a big cleanup as well with all the old poles that have been left over from Sandy. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety and also Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by saying that we had a very successful national night out this last Tuesday. For those of you who participated, I'm sure you would agree, I heard it went very well all over town. The Fire Department, we'd like you to know that as of the 30th of July, they have so far responded to 129 general alarms, 93 stair alarms, 218 investigations, 17 mutual aid calls, and 253 medical calls. I guess you can say they've had a busy first part of the first half of the year. That's it for that part of the report. And now to turn to the financial portion, I'd like to begin by mentioning that we had a successful MRC note sale. As you may recall, every August, we roll over bond anticipation notes that are partially funded for our field, our turf field and the land as well. And we had four bids for our $1.685 million bond anticipation note. It was substantially smaller than the year before because we were able to pay down 215, $215,000 of principal. The interest rate we're paying is .58%. That's obviously less than 1%, a very nice, a very nice sale indeed. I would also like to mention that the Strategic Planning Committees are moving right along throughout the summer. We have some very committed, diligent, hardworking people involved. I said initially that we were looking forward to final reports from those groups at the end of the year. And now somewhere I think that we could begin that process a little earlier, perhaps in November. I'll have more to say about that as we get closer. And the only other thing I'd like to mention by way of a bit of an introduction is our Bond Council, Steve Rogan, is joining us tonight because of the very interesting opportunity we have to refinance the borough's debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things from the Downtown Development Commission and the Chamber of Commerce. First, earlier today, Places Mobile was in Madison to work on a state-of-the-art interactive area guide. Their product, My Town USA, is built on Google Maps Street technology, and it creates and assembles Google Street and Business Views of small cities and towns, as well as segments of larger cities. They identify towns and cities with active and beautified business districts and main streets, and take portable Google Street View 360-degree panoramic cameras onto the sidewalk and inside businesses. They also do a helicopter shot, which maybe Ray can tell us a little bit about. Anyway, all the imagery is published on Google Maps, fed into their own proprietary app, and connected to viewers via an interactive 360-degree panoramic virtual walking tour experience called My Town. They also build into categorical navigation menus so viewers can have either a point of view or walk the downtown streets just the way we do. They can click on participating businesses to jump right inside their establishments. It provides a way to explore a place inside and out, and allows the community and local businesses to showcase themselves and entice people to put them on their must-go-to list. And we're very honored to be the first on their list in New Jersey communities. Second, and a final reminder, as the mayor said, the first annual summer Clambake's going to take place on Saturday, 5:00 PM at the Madison train station. There'll be a variety of food and games and music, and there's going to be a movie at 8:00 PM, and it's going to be the Lego Movie, and as the mayor mentioned, most of us will be serving popcorn. Just one final note, you save $10 per ticket by purchasing them in advance. Please check the borough website for details. And then finally, from the Senior Center Advisory Committee, three items. The fall season will kick off with Breakfast with the Mayor on September 8th, when residents will have the opportunity to ask borough-related questions of the mayor while enjoying a light breakfast. The program is sponsored by the Friends of the Madison Senior Center. Second, the Madison Access informational flyer is at the printers, and they'll be meeting this Thursday to plan publicity and distribution with the assistance of the DDC and Chamber. Their tentative implementation date is mid-September, when teams will visit area merchants with no and low-cost ways to improve accessibility. And finally, the Senior Center Fall Event is going to be Attorney Tom Murphy, who will be presenting Healthy, Wealthy and Wise: Ten Common Elder Care Questions for Seniors and Caregivers. The program will be held at the Civic Center on October 18th at 10:00 AM. Thank you very much.
And I usually report for the library, but recently we had the Touch a Truck, and so the library requested if they could do their own report to deliver some thank you. So Nancy Demcek, our library director, and Mary Beth Cooney from Friends of the Madison Public Library.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mary Beth Cooney. I'm a member of the Friends of the Madison Public Library and also chair of the Touch a Truck event. So I'm here, the Friends of the Madison Public Library is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to maintaining the excellence of the library by providing it with volunteer support and supplemental funding for special programs and expanded collections. Funds raised at Touch a Truck will support renovations in the children's department of the library. I'm reporting on behalf of the Friends of the Library. Most importantly, I'm here to thank you for the cooperation received from the borough departments, businesses, nonprofits, and local residents in putting on this event. Saturday, August 2nd, was a huge success, attracting 1,450 attendees. Our preliminary report forecasts a profit of over $23,000. This was the fourth Touch a Truck event, and it truly has become a community event attracting families from town as well as surrounding communities, similar to Madison events such as Bottle Hill Day and the Holiday Parade. It is a very big undertaking for our board members and a group of volunteers. We could not present such an event without the assistance of many other people. Special thanks go to the Madison Area YMCA and the cooperation received from several members of their staff. The Y allows us to park most of the trucks on their main parking lot and provide lawn space for the food vendors, entertainment venue, and admission tents. The Madison Rotary Club members generously provide volunteers to assist on the day of the event as well as financial support. The sponsorships received from local businesses, nonprofits, and local residents give us a big financial boost prior to the event. The event wouldn't be possible without the truck owners and operators. They provide a truck, and they stay with personnel the whole day, and answer many questions from the public, and provide great delight for the young attendees. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to add a thank you to Mary Beth. She is a highly organized event planner, and she had a very hard-working committee. They spent hours and hours on this event. So I thank them very much. Touch a Truck has become such a legend. Last summer, our staff can tell you, we were getting telephone calls and inquiries, "Is this a Touch a Truck year?" So it has become a big deal for Madison, I think. But I particularly am here tonight to also thank the borough departments. We met this morning, and I thanked them individually, but I wanted you to know this. The vehicles displayed by the ambulance corps, the fire department, and the police department are always favorites with the children. And all personnel participating that day were very cordial and friendly to the attendees. We need to thank the police department in particular for their cooperation with NICSIL alerts, road and parking signs, et cetera. Madison Public Works Department was also helpful in providing garbage cans and other needed supplies. And of course, the engineering department did a great job in getting Belmont Avenue paved before the event. So we really do appreciate everybody's help, and looking forward, I hope, to Touch a Truck in another couple of years. And thank you very much for letting us do this.
Thank you. It was a great event. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Council received a letter dated July 30th from Christine Sherman of Fairview Avenue regarding pedestrian safety on Central Avenue, and an email received also July 30th from Carol Alak of Spring Garden Drive regarding the intersection of Spring Garden Drive and Rosedale Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, this is the first of two invitations for discussion from the public, and this is limited to items that are on the agenda and also resolutions that are on the consent agenda. So the items you can discuss are, one that was not on the original agenda, but is the advanced refunding of the 2008 bonds that are maturing in 2028, the corrective action plan related to the annual audit, cancellation of general capital grant receivables also related to the audit. And you may also comment on, again, any of the resolutions on the consent agenda. With those guidelines, anyone wishing to speak, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Tim, welcome back.
Quick comment. I hope that we provide special training to our police department, our fire department, EMS people related to mental illness. We passed a resolution, but as we all know, a large percentage of people who are incarcerated in this country, in the old days, would be put in a mental institution, and it requires skill on the part of the police and the fire and EMS people to identify some of these cases and know how to handle them. Fortunately, we're not a poor town like Newark or somewhere where many of these people are just wandering the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as, to give you a little background, other things are going on. The YMCA is in a pilot stage of a statewide initiative related to mental health, and part of it is mental health first aid. You know, many people take first aid or learn CPR, so we're ready to handle potential broken bones, cuts, or lacerations, or anything. But what about mental health? But what about mental health first aid? So that is initiative that is ongoing. So I think this will be a new direction for this town, state, and hopefully, country. Anyone else wishing to comment on items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to our agenda discussions. And the first one will be the advanced refunding of 2008 bonds that are maturing in 2028. We have Steve Rogat. Ray, if you want to... We'll get Steve up there to...
He's coming. In 2008, the borough issued around $26,321,000 of bonds, and it was a 20-year bond issue, and the bonds were issued at around a rate of about 4.25%. At this point, we have $21,386,000 of the bonds are outstanding, and the final 10 years of the bonds are subject to being refinanced. Generally, when we issue bonds, the purchasers want what's called call protection. They want to know that they're going to be able to hold their bonds to maturity for the first 10 years of the bonds. The final 10 years of the bonds are subject to being prepaid at the 10th anniversary of the bond issue. So the final 10 maturities from 2019 to 2028 total $15,76,000 of bonds, and these bonds are at an average interest rate of about 4.98%. The call date, the way refinancings work in municipal bonds, is we have to wait until the 10 years out. That would be October 15th, 2018, and that's the date that we can pay off the old bonds. We're allowed to borrow money and do a financing now in anticipation of paying off those final 10 years when we get to 2018. But what would happen is we would issue the bonds, can issue the bonds prior to the call date, but the money has to be invested in treasury obligations until you get to that call date. And that's called an advanced refunding, when you issue the new bonds more than 90 days before you can pay off the old bonds. So a couple of months ago, the way refundings and financings work in New Jersey are the bond underwriters are always out there researching deals that can be refinanced, and they bring those deals to the attention of the bond attorney or the finance department. So back in May, I was contacted by Wells Fargo, which is a major bond underwriter, and they researched the database of all the outstanding bonds, and they found Madison's 2008 deal, and they found that we could achieve at least a minimum level of savings that are allowed by the state of New Jersey, and that's a 3% present value basis. When Wells Fargo brought the deal to my attention, passed it on to Ray and Robert and the council finance committee as well, and the savings were around 5% at that point. Since that period of time, the potential savings have gone up probably about $120,000 as interest rates have continued to climb. The council members were provided with sensitivity analysis last week, and what this represents is Wells Fargo showed us what could be saved if we went, moved forward with the refinancing, let's say, October of this year. And then they ran an analysis of what we could save if we waited one-year periods as we got closer to the call date. So we have numbers showing what the savings would be, October 2015, October 2016, '17, and then '18, when we get to the call date. So I'll just briefly run through this, and then anybody feel free to interrupt me with questions or if I'm not being clear. If we move forward with the refinancing now and under current interest rates and close the deal in October, we could save, the borough could save $1,072,000 in real dollars. That's net of any costs of issuance, and that approximates around $76,500 a year for each of the remaining 16 years till the bonds would be paid off. If rates stayed the same and we moved out a year later to 2015, the savings would increase to $1,392,000. And the reason that the savings increase is because of the fact that we have to invest the money. We can't just pay off the old bonds right away. We have to invest the money until we can get closer to the call date, and we're investing at below what the old bonds are bearing interest at. So there's an inefficiency that you're dealing with, that the passage of time lessens that inefficiency as you get closer to the call date. But in short, we have to borrow more money and invest at a low rate until we can pay off the old bonds. So jumping ahead under current rates, in 2015, the savings would be $1,392,000. 2016, it would be $1,761,000. 2017, $2,228,000. And then finally, if we waited for the call date of October 15th, 2018, the savings would be $2,704,000.
That's assuming rates don't move from 2.4%.
Well, that's the next part of it, yeah. It's all theoretical. You don't save a dime until you actually do the transaction. And, you know, so that's assuming that rates stay exactly where they are four years out. Okay? We asked Wells Fargo to run sensitivity analysis, showing what would happen if rates went up a quarter of a point, a half a point, 3/4 of a point, and a point. And I don't want to go through every iteration, but in short, let's say rates went up a full point. We wouldn't be able to do the deal at all in October. In 2015, the savings would be $30,000, so we couldn't do the deal then. In 2016, it'd be $561,000, which is roughly half of what they would be if we did the deal right away. Finally, if you get out to 2017, the savings approximate what they are now. So that's the impact. Rates would go up a full point, but by getting closer to the call date, you mitigate, you know, there's a relationship between rising rates and the length of the escrow period. So we ran various scenarios. The middle one would be if rates went up half a point. If we did the deal in October, the savings would be below the state's 3% threshold. It'd be $328,000. In 2015, it'd be $720,000, you know, barely over the state's threshold. In 2016, you'd be at $1,171,000, so you'd be where you were at today. As we all know, interest rates can move rather quickly. You know, it's a volatile market. We've had a nice trend downward over the last, most of this year, rates have tended to, you know, trended down nicely. So I wanted to, you know, put this in numbers so people can get an idea of the relationship of time and interest rates. Are there any questions?
So effectively, I guess what I'm hearing is it's either we assume that rates are going to stay either flat. If rates stay where they are right now...
Right.
And don't go up...
Right.
Then it pays to wait. But if rates go down, then it pays to...
No, if rates go down, we would do even better.
We would do even better.
We didn't run scenarios with rates going down because...
Odds are they're not.
Right.
And from what I'm hearing...
It's already arose enough picture, making an assumption that rates are going to stay the same.
So what I'm hearing is rates are probably about as low as they're going to go, and you've got this bird in the hand right now, so...
It's an interesting...
Yeah.
We didn't used to have this numerical sort of puzzle until the Fed dropped the short-term rates so low. You know, years ago, five, six, seven years ago, we could reinvest. You're limited to reinvesting at the yield on the new bonds that you're issuing, but we could usually get very, very close to that. You know, we could borrow at, let's say, 3% tax-exempt, and we could reinvest at 3% taxable, and we didn't have this phenomenon.
Right.
This makes it very, very interesting where, you know, you have the theoretical potential of, you know, almost 250% increase in savings...
Right.
...by letting time pass. We didn't really have this before. I just felt it was incumbent to, you know, present it to you and, you know, get your guidance as to, you know, when you would want to move forward with the transaction.
And you mentioned something, that the state has a threshold.
Right.
So if the savings fall below that threshold, we can't do it?
Legally, we couldn't do it.
Legally, we couldn't do it?
And...
And this is a one-time shot?
Yeah, well, that's the, yes, that's the other point. We're only allowed to do one advanced refunding. Okay? So when you go to market, basically, those are your savings. If a year, a year later, you know, rates went down, you know, we used up our opportunity. It's not the same as, you know, refinancing homes where you can do, you know, multiple refinances.
Right, you can do multiple, right.
We have restrictions that the IRS puts on us, and also the fact that, you know, the holders want 10 years' worth of call protection. So if we issue new bonds, they don't want to get called out on those for 10 years. So yes, you get one opportunity, and, you know, just wanted to present the information with the conversation going.
Rob and Carmella?
How soon can we move? Why do we have to wait till October? Why can't, why do we have to wait until October? Why don't we do it now?
Well, because we would have to go through introducing and adopting a refunding bond ordinance, preparing an offering prospectus, and getting a rating. So it usually takes two to three months to get those things...
And so there's no way, and we can't do a rate lock for the...
No.
60, 90 days?
No, no, no. We're not allowed to enter into those types of arrangements. You know, you're taking the risk, moving as quick as we could, you're taking the risk on where rates are going to be in, you know, two and a half to three months. It's just the nature of our laws and how things are done.
Well, nobody ever got fired for taking profits, so I think we should go ahead as soon as possible.
Carmella?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you again if you could give me those figures, October of 2014 versus 15. I think that you said the savings would be $1,072,000.
I have extra copies of these.
Well, I have it all here. If you tell me which page you're on, then, you know, we'll be able to see that.
It looks like this.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I wrote the wrong glasses.
All right, good. So what exactly do you want us to do tonight, Steve?
I'd like to get a sense of whether, when you would want to proceed, because the next step would be for me to prepare a refunding bond ordinance to have introduced at, you know, your next meeting, if you'd like, and then I would work with Robert and Ray and with the underwriter coming up with the schedule, also with the auditor, so we can get started on preparing the offering statement and working on the rating process so we can get out, you know, in the market.
Mayor?
Yeah. I was going to, actually, Ben, you're going to hold aside, I was going to get Pat.
I was going to say, Carmella, are you finished?
Sure.
You're finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So Pat, and then you, Ben, and then back to Bob.
So quickly, we're not meeting again until the beginning of September. Will that still give you enough time to get this done by October?
We'd introduce, you have two meetings in September?
Yep, so introduced on the 8th, and then 22nd would be final hearing.
And then we would advertise, the ordinance would be effective, you know, 20 days after we publish our publication after adoption. So probably, we would be selling the bonds at the earliest. We have to come to a council meeting on the day that the bonds are sold, so that would probably be your second meeting in October.
Which would be the fourth, after the Fed stops...
Fourth Monday, it's ended a month of October. Yeah, probably the ordinance would be in effect by then, because we can start working on the prospectus and, you know, as soon as we have the go at, we don't have to wait for the ordinance to be adopted. So we would probably be in the market, you know, late in October to coincide with your second council meeting.
October 27th would be that meeting.
That would probably work. The way the sales work is the underwriter goes out in the market on the day of a council meeting, and they offer the bonds, and, you know, any of, Robert and Ray and anybody else who wants to participate, you know, in the process, the underwriter will tell us where they think the market is, what savings we can expect, what interest rates they want to offer the bonds at. Then they go out in the market, and they take orders, and they come back to us and say, you know, we want to buy the bonds, or we're offering to buy the bonds at these interest rates, which will achieve these savings. And then that night, that day, I'll prepare a resolution, come to a council meeting that evening for you to vote on that resolution, and that's the point at which the transaction is locked into place. So if something bad happens in the market and, you know, the savings aren't where you would like them to be, you know, we just don't do the deal. So you have flexibility until you actually vote upon it.
And our costs, from what I remember, relatively low if the deal doesn't go through. It's like several, if the deal doesn't go through because the rates go against us, our costs are relatively low?
Yeah, the way this works, the only cost you'd have to pay would be the rating agency. Okay? My fee and the auditor, we're used to waiting if the market moves away from us. We just put everything aside and then pick it up when the deal's ready to move, and that's when you pay. So we take the risk, you know, that the deal doesn't work, and you won't get a bill from us.
The next question is the coupon dates, I think, are the 15th of the first month of the fourth and second...
15 and 10/15 are the interest payment dates.
Okay. Are those flexible? I mean, I know that doesn't really work well with our tax collections. Typically, it's better if they're later in the quarter. Does that make a difference?
Well, actually, I think those are decent dates, especially the principal is October 15th, so that's fairly late in the year. You generally have money...
What we do.
You know, at those dates.
I, I don't know if you remember, but I spent several years on the Board of Ed, and that became an issue at one point, because we had somewhere this type of schedule, and we were drawing funds from the Borough early, so I know there was a sensitivity there. I think you came to that meeting. So the last thing is, I'll say...
The Borough gets paid first, you know?
Oh, that's a good idea. Anyway, you know, we did this several times on the Board of Ed. I think it's a good idea. It's the sort of classic bird in the hand versus two in the bush. You can wait a year or two or three, but if the rates go, just move a bit, you can find yourself in a situation where you're not going to save any money. I think we're better off locking in, if we can, a million dollars' worth of savings over the next 14 years guaranteed, and that's from my personal point of view, the best way to go.
And Ben?
Yes, thank you. Before I make a remark, I just want to say that podium microphone is very weak compared to all the other microphones. So I don't know if Oscar's microphone could be moved to the podium, but if it could, it would probably be a great improvement from my end. I heard Steve say that what I was going to say, so there's really no reason to go into detail repeating it, but being risk averse as I am, when Steve and I initially talked about this, one of my concerns was we would get stuck with a couple of months of exposure between the time we agree to do it and the time we go to market, but as he said, we can walk away, and we can do it up until the last moment. And the other side is, there's always an opportunity lost, and you might wake up in 2018 and say, we should have waited because rates are much nicer now, but that's not a game I believe we should be playing. So I just want to say I'm enthusiastically in support of doing this.
Thank you. Bob, and then Rob?
Yeah. And Steve, I think you answered my question already, and I think Ben just echoed it. The fact that we can start the process now, but if rates go the wrong way, we have the opportunity to stop.
Well, absolutely.
That's correct.
Or if for some, you know, if I could predict interest rates...
Can.
You know, I wouldn't be here. The flip side is, I mean, if something cataclysmic, you know, in the bond world, bad news is good news for us. So if something horrible happens economically or as international politics or something like that, and, you know, we're heading into a recession, you know, you can certainly slow the process down...
Right.
If you want to look into the, yes, you have the ultimate flexibility... If you want to look into the, it, yes, you have the ultimate flexibility-
Good.
-to stop, move forward, et cetera, at, at no real cost, other than once we go to the rating agency, we do have to pay that.
Yeah. Like Pat said, and I agree with Pat, the opportunity is here now, a million dollars over X number of years, makes perfect sense. And Rob?
Thank you. Um, of course, as you all know, I'm a favorite, there's a, there's an FOMC meeting on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. I don't think selling bonds on the twenty-seventh would be, uh, advantageous, um, especially considering, given the guidance we've, we've received. Uh, it looks like that may be the cessation of the, uh, bond buying program. Is there any way that we can schedule some sort of an ad hoc meeting in August so that we can go to market the first meeting in October as opposed to the day before the FOMC meeting?
We, we certainly could do a, a phone-in to intro- so it would be to introduce the ordinance at, um, you know, two weeks from today if we stick with our normal schedule or we could, you know, plan it as long as you advertise it, uh, accordingly. And then it would be the September meeting, first meeting in September would be the, uh, hearing. That, how, how does that change your schedule?
Uh, so we would introduce, what's today's eleventh, like the twenty-fifth around, somewhere?
Yeah.
And then, uh, adopt September-
September eighth.
September eighth. Liz, how, how, what do we publish, four or five days after?
Thursday.
Three days after.
Three days after, okay.
Thursday, yeah.
So the eighth, eleventh, the ordinance would be effective on the, uh, October second. So we, we'd be in position to sell at your, uh, your first meeting in October.
I mean, I mean, it might not be much better, but it just, I, I would imagine-
Well, it is-
-that, you know, I would never advise someone to issue bonds the day before an FOMC meeting when they're talking about ending a major program, just-
Or you have the flexibility, if you want to call a s-, you know, a special meeting a week before that or s- w- w- you know, whatever you'd like.
I think the silver-
But, but, but certainly if we're, um, I think we could probably arrange a, uh, special meeting with the one, one agenda item and for the public to understand how this would work, we'd actually adjourn, or, uh, not adjourn, uh, call the meeting. Um, it would be run much like a council meeting. We, we might, you may see council members right in the room. You may hear someone like Ben on the phone. There would be, uh, comment, uh, ability for the public to comment and the ordinance would be introduced. We would then adjen- adjourn the meeting as it's one item and then come back on September eighth. So if, if that's a, if that's a consensus of the council, I, certainly the consensus I hear is the refunding is the route to go. And, um, with respect to Rob's, uh, background expertise in this area, I certainly would agree with the, um, you know, why, why wait for an arbitrary date in September? So, uh, we, we can, uh, coordinate calendars and get a special meeting. Other comments? Uh, Ben?
Uh, just a point of clarification. We're talking about an October issuance?
Yes.
Beginning of October.
Yeah, sale on October-
And, and they, and you were suggesting October twenty-seventh?
Well, now we're mov- we're suggesting moving it up to the earlier, uh, the thirteenth.
Okay, yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Columbus Day, or it'll be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth is Columbus Day.
And then we'd take, we normally take, um, three weeks to a month to close. And actually, the longer we put off the closing, we save a little bit of money because it cuts down on the investment period. So if the sale's the thirteenth, you know, we would probably close, you know, November tenth or something like that. The key is the sale date. That's when you lock in the savings.
Yeah. So, yeah, so Steve, you don't really have a problem getting the prospectus together and the bond ordinance and whatever, if we meet on the twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth or whatever we decide?
I, I'll, I'll be preparing the refunding bond ordinance-
Okay.
And then I'll be in communication with the auditors to get them started-
Okay.
-on, on the offering statement and come up with a, an overall schedule so that, uh, we can get to where you want to be.
Uh, one, one last question. Do we have to pass this by the state at all or?
No, we don't have to go down to, uh, to the local finance board as, as anymore, as long as we do it-
Steve, make sure you're right, right at the mic- microphone, sorry, so we can cap-
Excuse me?
Yeah, there you go, right at the microphone.
Okay, all right. We, the, they passed regulations that don't require us to go to the local finance board if we do what's called a straight refunding, which, or really conservative refunding, where we take the savings evenly every year and we don't extend the, uh, the maturity date beyond the existing maturity.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So, um, start working on the-
Fine.
-the ordinance, working with Ray. We will, uh, clear s- some dates later in the, the month for the special, uh, meeting and we'll verify whether it'll be in person or, or for each of you, whether you're in person or on the phone. That will, that meeting will be advertised, so people will know to, uh, be alert for that. And then on September eighth, we will have a second hearing.
Fair enough.
Could I, uh, could I just, one additional point of clarification, if we go ahead and do what you've just suggested, uh, Steve, when would you be ready to issue?
October thirteenth. Uh, we should be ready to have the sale at your first council meeting, the October, what, thirteenth?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
Okay.
That's when, yeah, that's when-
Thank you.
And then we would close, you know, a month later.
Yes.
Can I ask one question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One, one last question. We're, we're still able to refinance. We, we do this transaction. We could still refinance potentially for the last four years of, of the term, right? Can't we do it in twenty twenty-four? Wouldn't that be a ten-year call for the new debt or no?
Yeah, but we, we could make the final four years of this issue callable and then you have-
The final four years would be callable, right?
Yeah, because we-
Yes.
He'd have to, he'd have to structure it that way.
Right. Well, don't we want to preserve that option? I mean-
You know, the, the, the underwriters generally find, you know, people want ten-year call protection. So if we issue in fourteen, we're going to be, the, the bonds will still mature, the final maturity's twenty-eight.
Right, so it's a less-
So it's a fourteen-year deal, the first ten years would be non-callable.
Right.
The final four years could be callable. We'll just make sure that it won't impose any penalty, won't cause a higher interest rate. So I'll discuss that with the underwriters. But generally, the longer deals, uh, have, you know, have a call, which means that when you get out to ten years from now, you could call the final four years.
Right. Well, that's, I'd like to, I think we'd like-
As a current refunding, not as an advanced refunding.
Right. I, I think we'd like that option. Doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
If it doesn't hurt the pricing. Okay, thank you.
As long as there's, yeah, not as long as there's a interest impact, I think.
Right.
Because at that point, it's only four years, but if you saved on the ten years of interest, you'd be better off not having.
Carmella?
Steve, do, um, when do you think that you would know that, though, at what point? Because before we introduce an ordinance, I mean, I'd like to know about those, uh, would, would your underwriter be working on that as well?
Oh, the que- what?
Like, we would know that by the, uh, the August meeting?
Whether the, whether the-
The last four years are called?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the underwriter, you know, speak to them tomorrow-
Yeah.
-and get their sense. Uh, a- a- and if anything would change, I mean, I'll tell you what they're thinking. And if anything changes, we, we wouldn't set that term-
Right.
-until we actually go to market anyway. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, uh, two thousand and fourteen road improvements update. A lot has been going on. Bob?
Evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, good to be back. Had a week off last week and it's always nice to come back and have good things to report.
Mayor, it's always-
So, um, uh, while, uh, I was away, the, uh, road program first phase for twenty fourteen, uh, which we awarded a contract to Cefelion Sun General Contractors, uh, two in the amount of about, uh, one point three million dollars, uh, ran about fifty percent complete and we finished up with a mill and overlay of Academy, uh, Vinton, Wilson, Belmont and in front of the library, as Nancy had mentioned previously. The library, uh, uh, part of it took a little bit of wrangling in order to get them to, uh, to finish, but we managed to get that done before I went away. And so it was a nice vacation. Let's put it that way. Um, in any case, um, you know, um, with the traffic striping done, the, uh, top fill and seeding being done on the first phase of the project, the first five roads, uh, in the program, uh, the homeowners should know that, uh, you know, water, the grass seed and, uh, uh, the top fill and seed that's been put down by the general contractor and, uh, the grass will grow and the erosion control will be fully established. And we won't have to go back, uh, too many times to, uh, to repair the, uh, the, uh, the fill, uh, material behind the curb on, uh, uh, what essentially is, uh, the private property after, uh, we get done with the road improvements. So, um, yeah, if, uh, I, I think, uh, you know, most of what I've heard is positive, what I've observed myself, uh, it looks like they've done an excellent job, uh, on those roads finishing up. I see some cookies out in the hallway from the Academy Road crew, so thank you very much. That's the first time ever-
Are you married?
We've had cookies in a road-
It's actually not. The, uh, Pine Avenue brought us cookies.
That, that, yeah, that's true.
Well, fine as well.
You don't want to get that mad, yeah, because that was four years ago, yeah.
We're getting there, we're getting there. But, uh, yeah, no, all good news on the twenty fourteen road project with Cefelion Sun, Mayor. Uh, and again, we're about fifty percent complete. Uh, they are currently, Cefelion Sun, uh, working on Durwood Place, doing, uh, drainage, uh, curb and sidewalk improvements. Um, and they will spread out to both Pine Tree and Fletcher, uh, towards the end of the week, uh, in the middle of next week, doing that work as well, and then move on to North Street, which is the final road in the twenty fourteen program for reconstruction. And, uh, of course, North Street, uh, probably will start in about two weeks with drainage improvements. And we're really anxious about North Street to see if we can get a lot of, uh, private property owners tied into the storm drainage system, particularly with regards to sump pumps and leader drains and things like that, which have been problems for years over at North Street. So, uh, yeah, pretty excited to see that portion of the project started and completed. Uh, and, uh, hopefully, uh, before, you know, be certainly before the end of September, hopefully mid-September, we're pretty much all wrapped up with that, which, uh, again, as far as the contract timeline is concerned, is, uh, pretty reasonable as far as Cefelion's concerned. Uh, we did have a delay along the way for an emergency project, which Cefelion helped us out with, which was the, uh, Madison Avenue Emergency Storm Drainage Project, six hundred feet of storm sewer between Vinyl Place and, uh, Lewanica Terrace, uh, which they did at night, but that kind of slowed them down during the day. So they legitimately have a, a week delay claim for us on the, on the twenty-four road program project. But, uh, all good. All the projects have been turning out very well and, uh, happy to report that. Um, David Mainz has been coordinating with both, uh, DNL curbing and Tilcon to get the Mill and Overlay projects done. The Mill and Overlay projects are Division, uh, Union Hill and the last section of Woodland, uh, uh, west to Chattenborough Line. Um, and, uh, there was an add-on al- also for a small portion of Prospect Street in the center of town. Um, so those projects, I believe, are lined up, uh, September, October. Uh, certainly will be done with those, uh, paving projects, fairly simple, Mill and Overlay projects without a lot of curb, sidewalk, drainage improvements or anything along those lines, um, uh, you know, in October and before November. So, um, that is progressing. Um, I just, uh, put in a call to De La Pello, um, who is the general contractor that the state, New Jersey Department of Transportation is using for the Madison Ave-Main Street project, which is, uh, State Highway Route twenty-four, uh, one twenty-four, for those of you that don't know. Um, and, uh, it, it appears to me that, uh, the Mill and Overlay project that, uh, De La Pello is responsible for is being delayed again. Uh, and that will be, uh, scheduled presently in mid-September to be in Madison, uh, which is only good for us to the extent that there will be no conflict with your university opening or any of the schools opening. Problem for us, obviously, is the schools are open. And so, um, you know, would have been nice to get that, uh, project completed, uh, by the state on the original schedule. Uh, however, uh, they had complications, we had complications and, uh, uh, I'm sorry to report that, uh, somewhere in September, uh, De La Pello is going to get started and get finished. The nice thing about that project is it's being done at night for the most part, and I would say three or four successive nights in Madison and they'll be out of here. Most people won't-
The emergency generator finally got, uh, got started and, uh, that, uh, that, uh, allows, uh, Treadwell Pump Station to fully autonomous operation. Uh, if an emergency
comes or the power is out for any reason, uh, automatic generator kicks on. We don't have to tow one there and, uh, try to get, uh, DPW shuttling between pump stations with an emergency tow generator in order to make those happen. So it's nice to have one on site there. Uh, so that project is now complete. Um, East Street Parking Lot, um, which I know, um, we had a, a pre-construction meeting, uh, before I left two weeks ago, uh, with Stan Zial, uh, General Construction, who was the hired general contractor, it was about a hundred twenty thousand dollar contract, to completely replace the parking lot that's there. Uh, Stan Zial, two weeks ago, had committed to, uh, starting today and I was out there today and I was, again, happy to report, they were there, um, and, uh, putting up fencing, uh, construction fencing all the way around the perimeter of the property, uh, sensitivity to the Kirby School, uh, and the young children that are there. Um, you know, I've made that point over and over to them that, uh, it's a busy place and there's a lot of young kids, uh, th- in that proximity, so they have to be very careful about, um, traffic control and, uh, isolating the work area, uh, from, uh, the general public. So they are working on that, uh, today and tomorrow and hopefully will be involved in removing pavement and, um, curbing and, uh, demolishing, um, the, um, railroad ties that are there, uh, forming the old curb, uh, by Wednesday. Um, and that'll hopefully, uh, leave them in a, in a situation where within two weeks, the parking lot will be essentially done, uh, very close to the opening of school. Again, um, a little close, a little closer than comfort on the schedules, but, uh, uh, for a general contractor that's busy getting lots and lots of schools done, um, during, uh, the summer, uh, it looks good for us. Uh, now that they're here, they won't leave until they're done. So that's good news. Um, uh, one thing I'd like to report on, it's a kind of a non-capital issue, but I thought worthy of mentioning, uh, the Green Village Road Redevelopment Project, which, uh, the administration's been, uh, actively involved in. Uh, we purchased a three-flow monitors for the sanitary sewer system and staff has been working with our field personnel and a couple of vendors to set up our own in-house flow monitoring program, which monitors sewer flow in three different areas surrounding the Green Village Road property. How this helps us is getting a very, uh, firm ben- baseline of what the sewer capacity is during both dry weather and, uh, wet weather, uh, being August. Um, uh, you can't find a better time to get a dry weather flow average. And so those meters were in as of last week and, uh, recording data as we speak. And so that's, uh, very helpful for us. We can probably meter for six months and get a very, very good, uh, working data for, uh, the sewer capacity in and around the Green Village Road development. So that'll help them and it'll help us, uh, as the project shapes up moving forward. Um, informal public, uh, hearings, we'd like to schedule one on, in September, I believe, for the next year's capital projects, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, we'll have to get our calendars before the next meeting and, uh, and, uh, schedule that. Uh, it'd be nice to get, uh, our, uh, our proposed projects, including Ridgedale Avenue, West Street, Kenny Street, Lewanica Terrace, uh, Elm Street and the Mill and Overlay projects out there so the public can comment on them. Um, I guess, uh, one of the hesitance I have is I don't have a, a good set of planned documents that I can lay out in front of people yet, but we're working on that in-house and hopefully we can pull that together in the next month or so, um, and have something that we can lay out for an informal public hearing in September at the latest in October. So, uh, planning on getting that accomplished. Uh, North Street Pump Station, it's been around for a good long time. Uh, I'm happy to report that, uh, the Electric Department ordered, uh, two transformers, one for the water station, one for the sewer station. Um, about sixty-five thousand or seventy thousand dollars for the general capital, which was approved earlier in the year. Uh, Mike also sent me the quotes for the conduit to run the pipe runs between the transformers on the pole and the transformers on the private property, on the public property where the pump stations are. Um, and Mike, uh, has committed to work with Public Works to try to get those transformers installed, uh, uh, this fall. And, uh, we expect, uh, since they were ordered about two weeks ago, about, uh, twelve to sixteen-week lead time. So, uh, that puts us in October, uh, in order for the transformers installation to be, to begin. Hopefully, we can get the, the, uh, concrete pads and the conduit runs installed, uh, simultaneously. And, uh, when the transformers arrive, we can drop them right on the site. And that'll, uh, be a very big portion of the North Street project that, uh, has been left undone for a number of years now. So, uh, it'd be good to have that accomplished this year. Um, uh, last, uh, two more projects on our, uh, general capital program. One is the sanitary sewer lining projects, uh, and, uh, the bid is still scheduled for this fall. It's a fairly small project compared to what we would normally expect, uh, given that a good percentage of our sanitary sewers do need to get lined and we're lining a relatively small percentage of those every year. But a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's fine. We'll put it out to bid and we'll get that thing awarded and we'll get that done. Um, it's not really a weather-sensitive operator. It's not really a weather-sensitive operation, and so I think in the latter part of the year, you'll see that bid go out, and we'll have an awardable contract this fall. Similar situation for Waverly Green Parking Lot, which I know was added on to our general capital this spring. And again, once we get the surveys in, and Dan gets a chance to throw some things together on a CAD document that, in terms of a proposal, then we can essentially Mill and Overlay and replace the drainage on Waverly Green Parking Lot this year as well. So all good. All good news. If there's any questions about anything that I haven't covered already, please feel free.
Busy summer, so.
Oh, yeah.
Rob, just a quick one. Prospect Street, I don't know where that is in the queue. I know we had talked about doing it, but when it is addressed and the design work is done on it, I think that's another one of those roads that's in need of traffic calming.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Strangely, the last time it was done, and it's only been 12 to 15 years, Rob, you know, it's worn poorly over that period of time, and so there's a lot of... The worst section of Prospect Street will be addressed with Mill and Overlay this year, but as you're heading up the hill, absolutely agreed, the lanes are not well-defined, and there's not side friction, and there's not a lot of good striping on the road, which gets people to decelerate, particularly as they're coming down the hill. Agree with all those points. I'm surprised it wasn't done the last time around.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Pat?
Two things. One, the GVR sewage flow, can you explain why we're doing that exactly? I know you're trying to get a baseline, but why is it? Are we concerned that there may not be enough capacity there? You just want to see what happens after we develop GVR?
Characteristically, in any town in the country during rainfall, you have a capacity issue. So if we have a new development coming in, and it is beyond the originally permitted calculations for sanitary sewer flow, you have the ability to take that section to which it was, that section, that area, the additional capacity which they're asking for, over and above what was previously permitted for that site, and say, "Look, you need to put this into off-site improvements or onsite improvements so that it does not have a detrimental effect on our system." And so that's the effort there. It's quite inexpensive for us to do the monitoring. It's very expensive for us to do any upgrades or onsite improvements at that location, and so it's really a, it's a fantastic idea, and, you know, Mr. Cody's been very involved in getting us to the place where that we are. And again, for $10,000 worth of equipment, we're not really getting a lot of consultants involved. It's all data that we can assemble and pull together in-house, and, you know, I can only draw a comparison that five or six years ago, we had T&amp;M Associates come in and do North Street Pump Station sewer service area flow monitoring, and we rented those, the equipment for two weeks, and it cost us $35,000 to $40,000 worth of professional services on top of that. Now you're spending $10,000 for equipment that you own, you can use it all year long, and I'll pull the data together.
Okay. And the second, I'm not sure, one more thing, if this is for you, or for Ben, or even for Rob, but if we do a presentation on capital projects for 2015 in September, I think Ben mentioned he's expecting the strategic planning committees to come back in November, are we talking to them about what your thoughts are before that meeting, and compare it to what they're thinking in terms of how we're going to be approaching capital budgeting as we move forward based on, you know, what the, that strategic planning committee has learned, or is sort of getting ready to put forward later this year?
So the strategic planning subcommittees include a capital review.
I'm thinking specifically a capital review.
Right. And the capital review subcommittee is chaired by Bruce Galton, and Bruce has already seen the five-year plans that were put together initially in 2011, and again, in this past year. And so we have two sets of five-year plans as a projection, and we're also trying to extend that out for what I would say is probably, should be 35, 40 years. They're paring back to about 15 as far as the projection is concerned, because they realize that once you get beyond a certain point, it becomes very hard to forecast what's to be expected next. And so while we do have a lot of progress, Pat, with asset inventories and valuations, and annualized costs, which would be the total value of that asset divided up into its useful lifespan, so you should be able to get a very good idea of, in terms of load leveling, for capital reasons, what your investments ought to be. It's a little bit more difficult for five years to protect, project specific projects.
And I think what we're talking about is...
In terms of priorities.
Yeah, for our... I think their work is very valuable, but what we're talking about are just sharing with the public the roads that are in the queue, and that's really not going to change. We still have to do those roads as we look forward. We may approach a different timeframe, but we know these roads are coming up.
Well, the road program, in fact, is unique in our asset management process, only because it's the only plan that we have that we've adopted for the next 25, 20 to 25 years, where we know specific projects every year for that period of time. It's the only asset we have that we know that. And so we're trying to develop that into other assets as well, you know, but it takes time. So, yeah, there's a lot of effort going into that, and, you know, Ben and his group and subcommittees are commended for the work. I think it's very valuable.
Rob?
So the new stop signs on Prospect, they're cool. The blinking ones, they get a lot of attention. But regarding North Street...
I heard too much.
What?
I heard too much.
They get a lot of... They're on all night. I feel sorry for the people. So, regarding North Street, we encumbered a bunch of money 2011, right? So have we spent all that? I mean, what else do we have to do? And, you know, are these transformers are being paid from that money that we encumbered back in '11, or from the money we encumbered beginning of this year? I know there was some work to be done on the building itself, and I just, I don't want to get that kind of lost, or, you know, lose the money. So where are we? You don't have to do it now, but maybe it makes sense if you could just provide the council with an update on the overall project, you know, within a couple of weeks or a month or something.
Happy to do it. When we started looking at the capital obligation for North Street, we broke it out into a dozen separate projects.
Right, little, exactly.
And so I'll update that and distribute it there.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just want to, again, thank you and everyone involved with... This year, we did something different with putting all the road projects together. It sounds like that had a positive outcome. It is a great sign when you have, just as happened on Pine Street, when you have residents coming in with cookies to say thank you, and just as this council made a promise they would take care of a road, a resident delivered on their promise to give us cookies when the road was taken care of. And the other was, you know, we received a phone call which you forwarded on to me from an Academy Road resident, just talking about how the management of these projects is far above what I think you would see in many other towns with the communication with Dennis Harrington out there, or, yeah. We just have a great team, so please pass the thanks on to Dennis and...
At least as many good comments this year as I've ever experienced in the past, 10 or more. So, thanks, Mayor. Yep.
Thank you. For a second there, I thought I got my Harringtons mixed up, but I was okay, if that was why.
Corrective Action Plan. Robert?
The 2013 audit had two recommendations that require a corrective action plan. The first one is that an adequate segregation of duties be maintained with respect to the recording and treasury functions. There are two items here. We have a decentralized cash collection system, which means that we collect cash in three or four departments here in the building. We also collect it in two locations outside of this building, which is the Health Department and the Police and Fire. Our auditor would prefer a centralized, one area. Obviously, currently, we do that at this time, however, in my discussions with Jim and Ray, they intend to evaluate the feasibility of changing to a centralized collection center sometime in the foreseeable future. The other one is the Chief Accountant and Tax Collector, in the past, has done all the bank reconciliations. The auditor would prefer that to be split apart, so I'm recommending the bank reconciliations be transferred to the Chief Financial Officer and the Financial Assistant. So we have two people that have the ability to do that. The second finding was that older capital grant receivables be reviewed for possible cancellation.
Hold on, just a second, Robert, we're reconnecting.
Wait, let that go off just a second.
Okay, now, since we don't have the busy signal... Oh, well, why don't you hold off until we... That's all right. The whole room is staring at you, and the tape, and the tape is rolling.
Got to be smarter than the tool you're trying to operate.
Let's wait for Pat to come back, and then we'll... Ben, are you there?
I am.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ben.
Thanks.
To repeat, the second finding, that older capital grant receivable balances are reviewed for possible cancellations. There are three. The first was a Morris County Community Development Block grant. The balance we are carrying was $32,000. The grant was originally for $60,000, which funded ordinance 22-96 for architectural services for improvement to the Hartley Dodge. We called Morris County. We spoke with them. They provided proof and documentation that $54,000 was dispersed to Madison. We are shown we had an amount outstanding of $32,000, as I indicated in the analysis here. It appears that the grant funds were partially misapplied and recorded as miscellaneous revenue, not anticipated. I'm recommending we cancel the $32,475. The second is a transportation endorsement grant that's carried as an outstanding balance of $26,500. The grant was originally for 100 grand, $100,000, and it was for improvements at the Madison Train Station. The administrator and myself spoke with Bob Vogel, our engineer. He indicated that he submitted all the property documentation to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We should have received these funds, but we did not. The corrective action is, myself and the engineer will contact New Jersey Department of Transportation, try and collect these funds, or try and get a reason why we didn't receive them. If I do not have that information by mid-November, I will make a recommendation to cancel this amount by resolution, before the end of the year. So it's off of our records. And the last one was a grant balance of $150,000 for the Hartley Dodge Memorial Trustees. The grant was originally for $420,000 for work to be done here during the restoration. We did receive about $270,000. We will not receive the remainder for that, and the reason for is that the trustees spent the undispersed portion of these grants for improvements in the building, for carpeting, light fixtures, art displays, and selective demolition. So I recommend that we cancel the open $150,000.
Okay, any questions on the corrective action plan and/or the cancellation of the capital grant receivables?
I just wanted to say, obviously, unfortunately, I missed the presentation on the first part, but as far as the separation of duties are concerned, this issue of centralized cash collection, I assume Robert mentioned is difficult for the borough the way we're set up. We decided, however, we would take another look and see if there's a different way to do this, and in the meanwhile, in doing a bit of research on it, it turns out this is a common problem in municipalities generally, at least those our size, and it's only a minority, a rather small minority of them, that have centralized cash.
That is correct.
However, as I said, there may be alternatives, and we are going to look into it.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. So we have resolutions 238 and 239 that are consent agenda.
One further comment I'd like to make. In the beginning of 2009, I discussed this and made a recommendation to Mr. Cody. Because of the long timing, lead timing, for the collections of the grant receivables, we no longer recognize the grant receivable as a receivable in the general capital fund. We recognize the grants when we collect the cash. So there are no grant receivables on the, on our balance sheet after, after we get through this.
Very good. Thank you, Robert. All right, moving on to the next section of the agenda, ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held July 28, 2014. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 41, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 15 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Downtown Development Commission.
I open the hearing for ordinance 41, 2014. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on that ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2014.
I second the motion.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 41-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 42, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 11, 2014, setting salary ranges for non-union, full-time employees to include the salary range for the chief accountant and tax collector.
I open the hearing for ordinance 42-2014. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step up to lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2014.
I second that. Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 42-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now we're on to invitation two for discussion, where anyone in the, residents in the room may comment on anything that is on their mind. Please step up to lectern, state, well, anything reasonable related to the borough that's on your mind. Step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Welcome, Frank.
Frank Marks from Woodcliff Drive. I just wanted to invite the council and mayor, and anybody else in the borough, really, who Drew University does an anti-stigma campaign every spring semester, where faculty, staff and students wear T-shirts with a different mental health issue or concern, and then they hand out facts to people. So it might say depression, it might say substance abuse, it might say something else. So if you would like to join us, we do this every spring, and we would love to have everybody around town wearing T-shirts to talk about it.
Excellent. Please let us know when that comes up. I think it's a great thing to do. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Monday, September 8, 2014. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 43-2014 for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing a utility advisory committee.
I move ordinance 43-2014.
I will second that motion. Question?
Can I?
Carmella, it's, yep, your area, and then Rob, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments about this particular ordinance and give you a little background on it. This ordinance that's being introduced tonight gives the details and the purpose, mission of the organization of the Utility Study Committee. As the ordinance states, the committee will provide technical experience, assistance to our water and electric utilities. The committee will also assist the... The committee will also assist the mayor and council on utility capital and operations, as well as special projects. The borough has had an electric utility study committee for many years, and in the past, the borough has also had a water operations committee that was created in 1975 and went until 2007. Both of these committees were ad hoc, with no ordinance that created them and no chapter in the borough code governing them. So this year, I worked on advancing this ordinance so that we can formally recognize the committee and the valuable work that the volunteers and the staff do for our important utilities. So the details is the purpose of the committee, the number of members, and how they are appointed, how often the committee meets, and how the meetings are run. It is appropriate to adopt this ordinance. It is appropriate to formalize the committee and to support the long-term health and operation of our utilities and the wonderful volunteers and staff that serve them. The Electric Utility Committee has reviewed this, and they support this ordinance, so I hope that we can, the council can also support it as well.
Rob?
So if I understand it, then the strategic review committees that are ongoing are in support of this? Is that what you said?
No, the current Electric Utility Study Committee.
So my question is one of procedure, really, in that we have delayed voting on things like this, awaiting the results of the strategic review committees. I believe there's a strategic review committee on utilities. I also think, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I also think it's important that we include in discussion on the utilities some sort of discussion or future plan for some potentially, there had been discussion of having the assistant borough administrator become more of the utilities CEO, for lack of a better word, for the boroughs, as opposed to just an assistant borough administrator. So I appreciate everything the volunteers do. I'm not necessarily against, I'm not against doing something like this. It's just, if we're going to have one set of rules, maybe we should follow them throughout. And I would love to have a further discussion on some sort of professional management of our two most important revenue generating businesses that are owned by the public. My view, I'm not against this, I'm just wondering, I mean, if we're going to put other things off until we hear from the review committee, should we wait on this?
I think, if I'm wrong, I don't think very much has been pushed off, you know, such as the establishment of audit committee has already happened. We didn't push that off pending hearing back from the budget finance strategic plan. I think for the most part, business is going forward, and this is really a cleanup of, we've had, in a way, this is just formalizing a committee that mayor after mayor has reappointed on New Year's Day, the fact that, and then with some research done by Carmella and others realizing that this committee really has never existed, even though they've been doing great work over the years. Should something come out of the long-range plan committees, then it could be tweaked, but I think this just establishes a good advisory committee, and it doesn't preclude the work of, you know, changing how the management, the role of assistant business manager and other things go on in the future.
I think that there's...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, just a second. Yeah, actually, Ben, yeah, you can go ahead because Carmella already spoke, and then we'll come back around again. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that the Strategic Planning Committee focused on the electric utility is aware of this and does not perceive of it as in any way interfering with either what they're doing or what they expect to be proposing. Now, obviously, that could change, but they are aware, and we have thoroughly discussed it, so I don't see a problem, at least insofar as they're concerned.
Thank you. Before we go back to Carmella, anyone else wishing to comment, questions? Okay, Bob?
Just to be clear, this committee has been appointed every year, and so this is just a formalization of a committee?
It's shifted a little bit of some of their mission, but really, a major part of this is cleaning up that was never there.
I think a big, a very good aspect of this is to bring in the water utility. As I said a couple of weeks ago, the water utility seems to be the stepchild here, and it's a very, very important utility. We can't live without water. We have to make sure that we're creating good infrastructure along with the electric utility that gives us a lot of surplus. So when we started to do some of this research on it, we realized that we needed to bring this electric utility committee and bring the water utility into play. So actually, this is a name change from the Electric Utility Study Committee to Utility Advisory Committee to bring in the water utility as well, so.
Any other comments? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Hello?
Ben, are you still there?
Yes.
Was that yes to the ordinance?
I had to switch phones, I'm sorry. So I was off for the last minute or so.
Maybe you should poll them again.
So we have roll call, vote on ordinance 43-2014, and we have three affirmative votes leading up to you.
I mean, yes.
And Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, I call ordinance 44-2014 for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department to Reorganize the Composition of the Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move ordinance 44-2014.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Counsel discussion. This is basically, we temporarily, we had changed the ordinance to reflect the staff coverage necessary during retirements, and this is just putting back what was in place prior to that. Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Call up ordinance 45-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to Update the Water Connection Fee Schedule.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Counsel discussion. And for those out there, this is related to, has new connections, this is new construction, not someone that was redoing their home, but a completely new connection, so there is a, they pay into what our taxpayers have been paying in for years, and ordinance 46 is similar to this one. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Call up ordinance 46-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to Update the Sewer Connection Fee Schedule.
I'll move it.
I will second it.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R234-2014 through R243-2014.
Second. Discussion, or any need to poll. Rob?
Can we discuss 243-2014?
243? Okay. We'll vote on, if you can change your motion to 234 to 242.
I'll change it. Yep. I move consent agenda resolution R234-2014 through R242-2014.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution 243.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion for it, please.
I move resolution 243-2014.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Ben. During the budget negotiation process, we discussed giving the security guards a raise. I see we are appointing them now. The resolution does not say at what salary, and I'm wondering if we are going to continue, and I believe the conclusion was that we would discuss it in the late summer, early fall. It's late summer, early fall. How do we go about talking about this?
The salary could come back in a, would actually be an ordinance, because you'd have to introduce a new range, so it'd be a...
So should I write an agenda rec or something?
Right. That would probably be the best.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm satisfied.
Yep. And I would suggest to the council, we may want to also follow up another resolution to the state, asking that they look at as issues, virtually every town in this state has this issue, and every town along the beach has the issue of seasonal employees that are collecting unemployment on the off-season, on jobs that are strictly, are clearly seasonal related, and so I think we need to have some help from Trenton on that.
Mayor, I just have one quick question as a follow-up. Their salaries, they're paid out of the police department's budget, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so any discussion would also have to involve, I'm assuming, the police department?
Yep.
Thank you.
I mean, Mayor, maybe I could, I mean, right now, we pay crossing guards $16.31 an hour, and they haven't received an hourly wage increase probably in the last three years.
It's 2006, I believe.
Okay, and, but at the same time, as the mayor alluded to, they're applying for unemployment compensation. When you combine the hours worked per year and their base rate, and you factor in the unemployment, their hourly wage is actually $19.97 an hour, which is significantly higher than our peer communities around us. We did a survey of the Morris County towns and those who responded, this is the highest hourly rate paid. If you blend the rate with the unemployment compensation, when they don't work, so when school's out, they get paid. So they do a wonderful job, they protect our children, they deserve to be compensated. It's just, we are above the market for what we're paying, and in addition, the number of guards we have versus, Morris Township, for example, has two guards. Yes, they have less schools, but they have a greater land area than we do, and there's a lot of commuting to school.
So what we can do, since right now we're just appointing, is if, Ray, if you could follow up with sharing that survey?
If I could, yeah. Because I saw different data, I saw different data, and I truly believe that the crossing guards are first line of defense against the absolute animals that prey on our children. I also think they're the first line of defense in helping the police while they're on duty. So as far as I'm concerned, if I want to spend money on something, I'll spend money to protect the children of Madison. I don't have a problem with it, and I'm happy to go on record saying that. I saw different data, I would love to see the surveys. Either way, you know, I think it's money well spent.
We will.
And I'm happy to do whatever has to be done to get it formally introduced.
So when we have the, bring this back, we'll make sure that we have that information to share. Pat?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'd look for is what all the surrounding dozen or so towns pay, and whether or not they also pay unemployment insurance during the summer.
They all do. The unemployment insurance, actually, one of my colleagues at my firm is in the legislature, and he actually introduced legislation for shore communities dealing with this exact issue, but all the towns, this is something that if the crossing guards work for the school system, you wouldn't pay unemployment, because there is an expectation that they'll have a job in September. But every, this is something that every town faces in all 563 municipalities.
Okay, well, I mean, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, so if, you know, you really can't add in the unemployment insurance if everybody else's as well.
Well, the difference is, for example, Chatham Township, they don't rehire a person if they file for unemployment. The following year, they're not hired back. We don't take that position. So there are towns around us, if you file for unemployment for the period when you're not working, they don't retain you for the following school year. We don't take that position, which we think is cold-hearted.
And it sounds like an exposure to the town when they don't hire someone.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, I don't want to like, I don't want to play hardball to people that are protecting my kids, okay? Is there any work we can give them during the summer so that they continue to be employed? I mean, if we're paying the unemployment, it seems like we're paying them one way or the other.
We'd have to offer them paid employment, and we don't, so they could do the dog or cat senses, or deliver notices, but we'd have to pay them $16.31 an hour versus the unemployment compensation. So, I mean, if we're going to address crossing guards, and I'm fine and open to that, we should look at all the non-union employees who haven't gotten a raise in the last four years. Our street reaper, our rec director.
It certainly would be approached, because if they decline employment that's been offered to them, they would no longer be eligible for unemployment. So it's, so we can look at all, look at all those options.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mayor.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, Ben.
I understand, Ray, the results you're pointing to are those that came out of a survey that you and Jim did, is that correct?
We did a poll of various communities. A number of them don't respond at all. Liz was helpful in getting some of the information. It just seemed that we had a significantly higher number of guards, and our pay was competitive, but when you factored in the unemployment and the continued employment, that our rate was comparable or better than...
No, I understood, yeah, I understood. I was just curious about source, because Councilman Catalonello said that he saw different numbers, so I'm wondering what he had looked at.
Yeah, so we'll come up...
I'll be happy to share that with you when you're back.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I mean, no problem.
But, yeah, basically, it would be helpful to have the hourly rate, the number of crossing guards in these communities, and the total cost, so we can make a well-educated decision. All right, now we're, roll call, vote on resolution 243-2014.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $18,136.39. Health and public assistance, $5,852.85. Public works in engineering, $139,073. Community affairs, $6,864.88. Finance and borough clerk, $3,506,337.4. Utilities, $238,664.69. Totals, $3,909,153.28.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And just under new business, just a reminder that as decided earlier in this meeting, there will be an advertised meeting later this month to take care of the introduction of the ordinance related to the refunding of the bonds. So we will, we reach out to council members to clear dates, but we are not canceling the second meeting in August, it was never advertised, so even if we pick that slot, we have to advertise it. So we will clear the time. And with that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Switch doesn't work. All right. Hello, Louise. I love you, Steve.
I'll make a copy and give them back.
Yep, yep. Got some campers coming in tomorrow afternoon, so I'll sign some of those...